Hi, everyone. Going to call this meeting of the Regional School Committee on Tuesday, June 4th, to order at 6:33. Those attending tonight's meeting should be aware that the meeting is being audio and video recorded by SPACO, or actually, this is A-PAC, correct?
Yes.
And ASRSD. Any audience members who wish to record any part of the meeting must inform the Chair, who will announce the recording. This is to comply with the Mass Wire Tap Statute. The listings of matters are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Now, all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. Okay, so we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance now.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, a true republic for its citizens, one nation under God, indivisible, veritable, in justice, for all.
And Michelle, will you do the roll call, please?
Yep. Mr. George?
Here.
Mrs. Granger?
Here.
Mr. Leoni?
Here.
Mr. Quinte?
Here.
Mrs. Reshouds?
Here.
Mr. Simmons?
Here. Thank you. Is there any participation this evening? Seeing none? Shandy, you're just in time.
I'm sorry.
No worries, you're right on time.
Well, light you right up. You could have made a grand entrance.
So, it's the end of the year, so everyone's just kind of wrapping up. We had a selection, student council elections. The seniors are currently on like their senior week. So like, last week, we went to Red Sox game. Today, we're at Apex. And then, on the sixth of August, it's Swats. Tomorrow's the game lookout, the celebrations on Friday. The sports, like, all the sports are wrapping up their season, like, across the game after right now. Yeah. So, everyone's kind of just wrapping up their seasons. Everyone's kind of getting finals. Interesting. All coming together.
Hi. Joyce?
Tell everybody congratulations on all the awards they've got. That was great, nice. Quite some excited people, that's good.
So, yeah, we had awards night on Wednesday, and so, a lot of people came out.
Looked like Matt was excited to be there.
Oh, yeah. Character. But, yeah, so, awards night was, it's like a nice one. It's like a really nice thing that they do, because then, like, it just gives you, like, extra scholarship when you go to college, like, everything that you need to pay for college.
Has the Congress passed for the leadership of the MHS to be advisor? I know that you had an election for new offices.
Yes. I, yeah, because like, those are reasons why, like, we were just like, we couldn't vote for elections, so I didn't know that happened, because it was like, oh, God, I was passing ourselves.
Is Mrs. Naro still running, or is she done?
I think she's done, because she is leading the staff.
Right.
So, I don't know if she's running anymore. Well, I know she's done. I know, because she's been taking down Mr. Watson, she can't, I just don't remember. Oh, no, I didn't know you were going to get it. Sorry. It's Mrs. Malo and Mr. Tersine.
Some big shoes to fill there.
For a lot of years.
It's the money I've earned.
Yeah.
So, the important thing is who's going to be the representative here, that's all we want.
Lee O'Leary's going to be the representative here for next year.
Oh, that would be fantastic.
Yeah.
No problem giving him a hard time.
How's the mural going?
Which one?
Uh, the, sorry, Jarvis.
Oh, that one? It's going pretty, oh, it's going good, I think. It's like getting there. It's really great, because like, it seems kind of done on the outside, but it's not. It's like, a lot, and we have to put a pause on that one, because then you have to start working on our, like, class mural.
Yeah.
So then, yeah, because you have to finish that one, like, yesterday, you do have to show it till past Wednesday. So, it looks done, we've forgotten, kind of, but it's, it's.
It's getting there, that's good.
Is the class mural done?
Yeah.
Yeah. You guys happy with it?
It's funny, because like, it turned out how it turned out, and we're like, I guess, yeah. And it wasn't bad, it's like, yeah.
Yeah.
You'll see it.
It is what it is.
Yeah.
Well, sometimes you have a vision. Sorry, go ahead.
What happens with your summers, you're getting ready for school?
Oh, um, I have a job at the slab and gardener in the peptide, so I'm just going to work on the, uh...
You're working a lot. You're working a lot, then?
Yeah.
Great.
Congratulations.
Um, I don't know, you guys, do you guys like decide the scheduling, or like, how, like, not like scheduling, but like pathways? Like, how that works?
So, do you have pathways at the high school?
Yeah.
Um, we, we, we have to suggest it. Yeah, do you have suggestion or comment?
Yeah.
Up to here.
Because like, I took a lot of AP classes, but like, after like, going through like all four years of high school, I realized, because I took biology my freshman year, but I didn't take bio until like, senior year, and like, they don't really recommend taking APs until like, your junior year, ninth grade. I had my friends take it junior year, but even by then, like, by that time, like, your knowledge of bio is like already like, that you did, so like, you have to like, relearn biology, and then like, learn like AP bio. So, I don't know, I was just like, thinking, like, can we like, fix the pathway, just so like, you could, you have the option to take more APs, like, your sophomore, if you wanted to, like, not with a lot, but like, if you want, so, if you have your bio, you can take AP bio right away, and that would be better prepared for it. And then, like, a lot of sophomores took AP status here, and they said they really liked it, because then, like, you don't have the information on your plate, because you're just a sophomore. You're focusing on that. And then, if you take like, one or two your sophomore year, or when you take like, two or three your junior year, and then like, if you take like, four your senior year, you're better prepared to like, walk through the process, or you have those APs to take your senior year, so you're not a chance.
Yeah, I had an information, you guys shared that with me at advisory as well, student advisory, and so I passed them to the high school, because it makes a lot of sense. And actually, while Sheen is here, part of my comments, we'll get them out of the way, is that for 2019, 103 students took 190 exams in 12 subjects over 11 days.
Wow.
That's incredible achievement, that's a robust AP program we have, and congratulations.
So, we're going to school, I forgot. With Easter, good.
Got to shine.
Hopefully.
It's fun to be in the city.
Yeah, I do say please.
That's great. Anyone else have any questions, comments? Shandy, just want to thank you very much for being such a great representative to us all, all school year.
It was a fun.
It was, it was, sure.
That's what I wanted to ask you, so how did you like the experience of coming to the school committee once a month and reporting out? You liked it a lot?
Like, it was really nice. It was like nice, like, having my, like, to ask other people, like, oh, what do you want to see, and like, add my input, it was like, it like, made me feel welcome. So, give that voice in the mission statement.
There you go.
Yeah. Well, thank you again.
Thank you so much.
Best wishes to you.
We know as busy as you guys are doing something else, it's huge.
All right.
Do you want Friday night?
Yeah. Okay, so, moving on to our consent agenda, that will include the approval of the May 15, 2019 Regular Session Minutes release, the warrant memo, and a donation to the Air Shirley Regional High School of $200 from Mrs. Jennifer Farley for the class of 2020.
I made a motion to accept the consent agenda as written. Sorry.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
If you may, they added when they bring attention to the committee, so if we look at page, are two of the minutes under New Business, when you voted to amend the employee twenty budget at the time. We did have the total operating budget, we look at under recommendation, and it says, bring the total wall funds to 300, 811,000, 809. We added in that amount for the record, so I would ask that we approve that into minutes.
But that wasn't the number that we used at the meeting?
We didn't, you didn't, you voted to amend the employee twenty budget, but we didn't vote it with a amount, the total operating budget. So, we didn't change the vote. The vote stayed the same, but in the minutes, we wanted to memorialize that.
What's the number?
Yeah.
So, we don't need to change anything, that was just merely clarifying?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, any other comments, questions? All those in favor?
All in.
Any opposed? Okay, so that passes. On to New Business. First item is recognition of retirees, educators, and Brooklyn Arno Mitchell.
Just adding my notes, it would be a second. Michelle, did I happen to give you a paper that I gave you still online?
I don't know, but you can use my iPad.
I gave you notes on, um, the, the, I gave you. You can't wait. I'm retired.
I just have.
Retired. I can probably, I have it on my phone in Google. Do you want justice? No, 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 you don't have, it's my notes I have in the retirement, it's my notes that I spent time writing. If there's not reason, uh, the one I do have. I gave you some papers and stuff.
Yeah, no, I'm looking through them right now, I don't think I have them.
Let me just go on my phone. So, the first person. Spent a lot of time looking through your files. Okay, so, our first I'd like to call up is Sharon Webb, please. So, Sharon has been a middle school counselor in the district for 25 years. She was hired as an adjustment counselor for the Air Middle School, 11 years. She worked in schools of various kinds with adolescents and children, teaching music and musical theater. She estimated she taught nearly 4,500 students.
I was trying to figure that out the other day.
In musical theater.
Yeah.
Yes. In early evaluations, she was described as a capable, patient, professional, worked hard to understand middle school mission and support it, which required her frequently to take risks and support unpopular physicians. She courageously yet sensitively, this is by an evaluator, she courageously yet sensitively encouraged positive staff growth. She has worked to protect students from poor teaching practices without excusing those students from personal responsibility. That was written in your evaluation. And since I've been here, Sharon, you have been a champion for kids and for adults, and we really appreciate your service, and we wish you well and have a good school committee. We have a parting gift for you.
Thank you so much.
Which is right here.
Thank you. You're very welcome.
And appreciation, Mary Sharon Webb, and grateful appreciation of your dedication and service at the Air Shirley Regional Schools. Congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you.
Best wishes. So, Sharon, plans your graduation.
I really had to say to that to Lana and Bill, I really leave with mixed feelings. I, Shandy and all the Quintes have been wonderful students, and certainly make me have mixed feelings about leaving, and I really love, and Bill's kids, and several of you, your kids too, and I really have enjoyed being here and working with our wonderful administration and with wonderful kids. So, yes, I plan to get back into the arts in a big way, and do some volunteer work, and hopefully some traveling, and...
I think you said some writing earlier.
Some writing, take some writing classes, fiction, and do that too. So, I plan to be very busy, but I will miss everybody.
Congratulations. Well, good luck. I'm sure you'll interact still with students, and whether it's in music, or coming back to Sal, or something like that. There she made it, okay.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, very welcome, thank you. So, next I'd like to call up Mary Ellen O'Hara. Please. So, she's been in the district for 22 years, and in the bill since 1986. So, Mary Ellen has taught preschool, kindergarten, as well as grade three. Her former evaluator described her as fastidious about daily planning and weekly instruction, and she devotes many hours to developing those plans. She arrives early, and she stays late. Well, I can attest to that, because yesterday, I was in Laura White, at around quarter or five, and Mary Ellen, we were sitting at her desk, working, with nine days to go, for time. So, what does that say?
It's a lot to do.
It's a lot to do. She has taken on leadership roles through her years, such as team leader and curriculum leader. And another evaluator wrote, she is a professional with impressive work standards, who is well liked for collegiality, contribution to the school community, upbeat outlook, and sense of humor. Mrs. O'Hara was on my faculty advisory committee, and I always appreciated her candor. So, Mary Ellen, we wish you all the best, and we have a token on behalf of the school committee.
Thank you.
A gift for you at your part, and move on to retirement, and of course, a grateful appreciation of your dedication and service at the Air Shirley Regional Schools. Congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you.
Yeah, very welcome.
My plan is, I think I really want to stay in the education field, and I want to maybe get another job on a part-time basis, or, you know, I feel like working full-time is difficult, and that's why I'm there so late every night. I want to take it easy a little, yeah, but to keep my, well deserved.
I don't know anyone, I, all the years I've been in this business, if people have retired, they continue to work in some capacity, some in the schools, some in other, other careers, and so, I think it's healthy, so good luck.
Thank you.
We hope you come back in Sal.
Thank you.
So, Mrs. Marshawn, she's a fourth grade teacher at the Laura White, and she's been with us for 12 years. She has taught second and third grade, and she's also been a curriculum leader and team leader. Through her years, she's run various after-school clubs, and has tutored students after school. And an evaluator wrote of Renee, she is an experienced classroom teacher, who is caring, collaborative, and conscientious, and she puts in long hours, planning lessons, and correcting papers at school and at home. Yesterday, when I was at the Laura White, Renee was in her room, working at quarter or five, and she was working on her benchmark assessment scores for her students. Again, with nine days left to retirement, what does that say about working here for your kids? A parent took the time to write Renee a letter, and it was in her personal file, and the parent wrote, it is not often that one comes across a teacher that exemplifies everything a teacher should be. Mrs. Marshawn has made my daughter love learning, a gift which I can never repay her for. So, congratulations on your retirement. The school committee, and your little grateful appreciation for your dedication and service to the Air Shirley Regional School District. A donation has been made in your name to the Air Shirley Educational Foundation, ESA. We thank you for generosity, and congratulations on your retirement. That was Sheila's gift. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next call to Mrs. Desai, Roshan Desai. Welcome, Roshan. So, Roshan's been with us for two years as the principal of Laura White, and I want to extend my appreciation to her for her hard work over these two years. We worked on many things together, and one thing we did at the Laura White was a huge lift, is changing the parking all around.
Oh, yes.
So, we became parking attendants, and we scoped it out, and we worked very hard, it's very hard to change people, as you know, too. So, that was, but it was, it was well needed, and she recognized it as well, so, among other things, that you've done over the years. Friday today, you've been a K-2 principal, you've been a preschool teacher, and you taught math, science, in grade six, seven, eight. Roshan is a pediatric occupational therapist, and she plans to retire from education and return to work as, in that role.
Go back to babies.
Yes. We wish you well, Roshan, and again, on behalf of the school committee, and grateful appreciation for your dedication and service to the Air Shirley Regional Schools, a donation has been made in your name to the Air Shirley Educational Foundation. We thank you for generosity, and congratulations on your retirement. Okay. And in life, we have what we call a lake bloomer, and that lake bloomer is named Pat Lynch. Because as I was organizing and getting ready for school committee retirees, I was saying to Michelle, why isn't Pat Lynch coming? And she said, oh, the Page Hill Top has the community all night. So, I dialed up Mr. Duffy, and I said, Mr. Duffy? And I saw Pat, and she said, well, I've got all these kids coming. So, she said, if I can make it over, I will, so we're happy that you've joined us. So, Pat is another hard-working teacher. She's been an active member of her team through the years, she's been a school council, she's been a science curriculum representative. Now, of course, you know, my office is at Page, Page Hill Top, and I can tell you, she is in her room most nights until the wee hours.
It's because the music's too loud, and she...
It's too loud, it's all the way on. She hugges over her students, and she treats them as if they were her own. It is amazing to watch her with them. In one of her earliest evaluations, her evaluator wrote, Mrs. Lynch is the sort of teacher who cares first and foremost about her students on a personal level. Pat is creative, confidential, trustworthy, and has a great sense of humor. Pat is a wonderful educator. So, Pat is very sad to leave her kids, because all 20 of them are her 20 little...
Babies.
And she hugges over them, and, and something like I've never seen, so...
Someone once asked me, do you have any kids? And I said, yeah, I've got 20 of them. And they looked at me, and I said, yeah, and then I get a new bunch every year.
Yeah, they thought you were just a kid, they were going to recognize you. But she truly is a champion for children. So, Pat, for you, school committee.
Thank you.
And grateful appreciation for your dedication and service to the Air Shirley Regional Schools. Congratulations on your retirement. You're very welcome.
I'm going to France for, I'm going to try to kayak in France.
Wow. And you're going to the Temera thing, right?
Yes, because I don't think I can stand those buses for all, I'll be crying on the front.
But she might come back as a paraprofessional, she thought.
Oh, I may be in the audience here as the representative for the union still, so...
That's right. Congratulations.
You can't get rid of it.
That's okay, you don't want to. So, congratulations, everyone, and thank you so much for your time. Let's just try to recognize, Shawnee Shorey, a first grade teacher at Laura White, she wasn't able to make it here tonight, but she's retired after 34 years. Mrs. Jordi Woodrow, she's the Page Hill Top nurse, and she's retiring after 35 years in the district. And Renee Del Rosario, who is the Page Hill Top historian, she retired after 19 years. And then I had additionally on here to recognize, as you know, invited Mr. Donovan, who was named Teacher of the Year by Barnes &amp; Noble on an essay that was written by Brooklyn Mitchell Arno, and they were both invited to come, but they were on the Apex trip, they weren't back. And then, of course, Mrs. Capasso and Mrs. Whitmire at the high school, both received Partners in Excellence Awards for their excellence in teaching the AP courses that they teach. And they are down, I don't know exactly the town, but we authorized them to go and do some AP scoring, and get some, have a press book out, and teaching AP courses, so, that's what they have this week. Right, and Mrs. Naro has joined in as well, so we have three of them this week. And actually, I could say, Mrs. Capasso wrote an email last night, and said, I just want to thank everyone for giving me this opportunity, it's the best profession the mountain has ever had, I'm loving it.
Oh, really?
Yeah. So, thank you.
Great. Anyone have any comments?
Just thank you all for your dedication to the district, to our students, and may your adventures in retirement, our next adventures, be awesome.
Thank you.
I was doing some quick math, just while you guys were here. Amongst the teachers here that are retiring, it was 90 years of service, just the teachers that are here, so that's really crazy and impressive, and we thank you for your dedication to our students and our school community.
Thanks so much.
Do the best.
And Mr. Telly just came in, the new president, and you've recognized all of the folk that are leaving as well, retiring.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, that was fun, but now we have to move on.
Yeah, thank you, certainly.
Thank you. So, moving on to summer facilities work. Mr. Briggs?
Sure. Yeah, Mr. Briggs, if you'd like to come, please. So, as you know, each summer, we create a list of projects for work to be done in the schools, in all four schools. So, thank you, Pat, for making the effort. So, Mr. Briggs, Mr. Quonget, and myself, and all the principals, we compiled a list with some of the costs, and so, Mr. Briggs is going to go over it with you.
Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you?
Thank you for having me. Yeah, we compiled another summer project list, you've seen these before. I haven't got all the pricing in yet, still working towards getting that done. You have this list before you, you've seen it?
You don't have it, it's in your folder. It should be in your folder.
Oh, I see it now.
It's in the drive, which might have hundreds. Do you have it?
Okay.
Okay, you have it.
All right, you all set?
You have it?
Joe?
So, this is compiled items we'd like to work towards completing over the summer, along with our typical cleaning and maintenance that we do every year anyway. This is above and beyond that. And so, there's a quick list here with most of the pricing in. I can, if anybody has any questions about anything, I can answer to that, or I can point out a couple of things specifically that we're, we're looking forward to doing. Working towards a preschool program happening over at Page Hill Top, consolidating that program over there, would identify some things that we'd like to do to make that place more presentable for the opening day. And along with that, you know, there's a lot of carpet replacement we'll be doing. I'd like to point out, too, that in the, sticking with Page Hill Top, which I also want to point out, I don't want to get off track too much, but these lists in previous years have been very lengthy, lengthy for the elementary schools, and now that list is starting to shorten up a little bit, it's become a little bit more even across the board. Obviously, in the beginning, some of the older buildings needed most of the attention, and they got that, and, you know, we're still working towards making improvements all the time. But we will be doing some floor tile replacement in the fourth and fifth grade wing at Page Hill Top. We're moving towards putting in vinyl tile, where they've been taking out the old, old carpeting. We find that a little bit easier to clean and keep more infectious free, you know, it's just an easier thing to clean, a carpet, VCT over a carpet. So, we're moving towards doing that. We have another asbestos abatement I'd like to do at Page Hill Top. This is in the crawl space underneath the floor where the pipe chases run. We've done quite a bit through the years, we've had to go in there and do that for piping repairs and such. Some of the old steam supply and return lines are, got corroded and began to leak. This next abatement should pretty, come close to pretty much completing all the abatement underneath the crawl space, which is an important thing. These days, contractors won't enter that space unless you have that cleaned out, it's a health hazard to them, and so, we're working towards completing that in this next phase, how to pretty much wrap up the crawl space underneath Page Hill Top, which is a, which is a really good thing. We've got some sidewalk repairs to do, and window replacements at Page Hill Top, and exhaust fan maintenance on top of the, up on the roof, to improve air exchanges. And moving on to Laura White, we've got a big pavement job to do on the back parking lot, if you've seen that recently, it's become very uneven and broken up, there's a lot of drainage problems in that parking lot in the wintertime, when we have rain and melting snow, so we're moving towards taking care of that. On an aesthetic thing, I'm trying to do up the front island out there where the buses, where the drop off and pickup is, so that's happening real quick. We'll see a big improvement on some, on the front entrance of the Page Hill Top, of the Laura White building. We'll see a big improvement on some, on the front entrance of the Page Hilltop, of the Laura White building. And some painting and things of that nature, which is typical during the summer. We purchased, I'm in the process of purchasing a new garden tractor for the middle school building. This is going to help them immensely for grass cutting and especially snow blowing in the winter. There's a lot of sidewalk around that building, especially on the front. Currently, we have a walk behind snowboard, but if that were ever to fail, you'd completely do everything manually. This will be our primary machine and then we'll have the walk behind as a backup. But there's a lot of snow clearing to do in front of that building. So this is a kind of a cool story that I want to share with the school committee and people here today because as a facilities guy, I found this kind of interesting. You never know what curveball you're going to be thrown from day to day. But at the middle school, which has been operating for 14, 15 years now, we just had our elevator fail an inspection. And it failed because the hoistway is not ventilated properly. So for whatever reason, it...
It's only been inspected every year.
So we literally have to install some mechanical ventilation so that in the case of a fire, any smoke that would accumulate in the hoistway of the elevator would be evacuated from the building. We don't have mechanical ventilation in that, for that hoistway right now. And it was just now picked up on. Somehow it got by during construction. But I do know that the inspectors check for it every year. Well, I know I can speak back three years. But all they did was they'd stand on top of the elevator in the hoistway and hold a tissue in front of the grate. And if it sucked towards the grate, they knew the ventilation was working. Well, on this particular day, we didn't have very good ventilation. There was just no good natural draft in the building that day and the guy's tissue didn't move. So he goes, "You've got to go check your fan." And I said, "Well, we don't have a fan." And he goes, "Well, I have in my house is a fan." And I think there's a mechanical ventilation in the machine room for the elevator. And I think that that kind of messed him up a little bit. But there are two subsystems. There's not mechanical ventilation for the hoistway in the elevator, in the shaft. So we now have to provide mechanical ventilation, an exhaust fan, a fan motor and a fan. It needs to be tied into E power. So if we have a power failure in a fire, it will still continue to run and evacuate the smoke. It has to be tied into the fire line, of course, so that when the fire line goes off, this will automatically kick on and ventilate the hoistway. And along with that, it has to be temperature controlled, too. So if the hoistway gets up to a certain temperature, it might be 80, 78 degrees Fahrenheit, the fan will automatically kick on. So I'm pursuing that, too. So that you know, we have a 90-day notice. Luckily, this fell on the school year at the right time because the kids will be leaving pretty soon. Gives us time to get it taken care of. But I want to share that with you because, you know, that's the day in life of the facilities director sometimes. But, you know, we've taken all of the punches and deal with the paths we're dealt and go forward.
So it doesn't have to be a very big fan, then, because it's only evacuating the column, right?
It's a pretty large square area.
Is it pulling air from where? Pulling stuff from the hallways and stuff?
I'm sorry?
So it's evacuating the air out of that column?
Just the hoistway, yes.
Right, so if there's a fire someplace, then it's pulling air from the doors, from the hallways?
Correct.
Which is filled with smoke.
So it's probably sized to evacuate a certain cubic feet per minute, depending on the size of the shaft. The opening and the ductwork that we ventilate the shaft with has to be a certain size area. It's all elevator code and FPA, fire protection code. And I've got mechanical contractors working on, you know, the size of the fan that we need to have and then all the control wiring that we'll need to have to make it work the way that it's supposed to. It won't be a big fan, but there's a lot of...
A lot of stuff to control it.
Pieces to go along with it, yeah.
Now you added something that should have already been installed prior to other pieces of that whole elevator.
Yeah, somehow it got by on day one.
You know, you take something apart.
That's why schools are built the way they're built now. We have one firm building, we have another project manager, which is a different firm. Before, when that school was built in Rose Corporation, you hired a company. Now, Rose Corporation went under for very good reasons. We found a lot of things with the HVAC system that were there and never hooked up, never wired and properly, improper controls, all that stuff. That's why we don't have an independent local board with a clerk of the works trying to keep cap on a contractor doing this type of commercial work. There's always something that will slip through the cracks. And from what I hear, it's hard, as hoistway ventilation is such an emphasis on that today, that they actually have a HVAC engineer that will stand the architects for hours now to make sure that, you know, nothing's gotten missed.
And they weren't even the lowest bidder.
The lowest bidder program. The owner's party manager who goes in and oversees it. You have to have them. And I can tell you, over the years of Rob Knettes, we've had a lot of issues at the middle school with the HVAC system and with the heating system.
Yeah, yeah, there were some troubles from day one, you know.
Lot of problems.
We had our clerk of the works, whatever the case it was.
And those controls, we had nobody that knew how to run.
But it was a different, it was a whole different system. It was the lowest bidder, hiring your clerk of the works after you had hired your firm. And, you know, it was like, the system that went in with this school was like 9,000 times better than what that was.
I'll give you a real quick example, too, of the HVAC at the middle school. The heat ventilator units that are in the individual rooms, there's two coils inside that cabinet. And one was meant for heating and one was meant for cooling, which was a great idea if they had thought about putting cooling in down the road. It was outfitted to take that. But someone along the way or during the way, somebody tied heat into both coils. So when the unit was calling for heating, it would heat. And when it was calling for cooling, it would heat. And it was just, it was a very uncomfortable situation over there for many, many years. And it took a little time and energy to figure out what the problem was, but we did. And we went through every single classroom in that building and corrected all the problems. And that was just one.
It was just one.
Yes. And the other point, you could point out, too, are the windows.
Yeah.
You know, they...
We've got some window failures there.
Yeah, they can't open windows and get fresh air or anything in the second quarter.
They're very, very heavy double on windows. And right now, the pound of balance system of some of them is not working, so they can actually come down really hard. We're working at the high school on a few things. Obviously, we'd like to add some parking, so we're looking into that. The lower practice field is on our list here and also as well as the access path to get down to it. We have to improve that because it washes out every year. And I've got a building water filter on here. It's just something that we might want to consider one day. I'm gathering more information about that. And that primarily is for, you know, we had some water concerns, but in this case, we might be able to do a level of filtering that will help get some of the magnesium and iron out of the water, which tends to cause havoc with some of our plumbing fixtures. So we might want to toss that around a little bit. And just regular maintenance stuff after that is the most important. Any questions?
Yeah, replacing the carpets at Page Hilltop and putting in tile. Any consideration to area rugs or...
Yeah, I have some. So some teachers have already come forward and said that they'd like to have their children...
Sitting on the floor like a right passive for elementary students.
Yeah, so that was a little bit of an oversight on our part. I was only thinking about cleaning the room.
That's your job, so that's, yeah.
But we're in tune with that need, so.
Yeah, all the classrooms have area rugs. A lot of the classrooms have, and only other kindergarten, so they'll consider gathering in the rug. Yeah, that's not an issue. Good point, but pardon.
If you get, I mean, that's a big list. If you get three quarters of that done, some of it'll be impossible.
Well, it'll be 100%.
Yeah. But now I'd say, what, I really, I really want to add, make it to 100%.
Make it what?
I want to make it 101%. Can I add something?
Sure. Well, you told me today. I do a daddy boy. I love that.
Yeah, you can. You can. You're not allowed. If the opportunity permits to rent a lift or to get a firm to, to get some myriatic acid and a power washer on the chimney for the Hilltop school.
Yeah.
Every time I drive in, I'm like, gosh.
I haven't given up on that. I've looked into it a couple of different ways. And I actually have a custodian onboard right now that thinks he has a method for it. So we might get that, I could put that on the list.
Yeah.
And hopefully, we'll do okay. We might not get it all cleaned, but we might just get some of the grease out of that material and then do a paint job on it, make it look a little better.
And I can tell you, Joe, because you brought that up a few years ago, so he's had, the company was out here.
Oh, yeah.
And, yeah, and they said that...
Well, there was one person that I had some experience with that was going to take it on and then decided not to. And they would have to use some sort of, something that had some sort of acid base. Or at least that's what I...
Right, worth it, worth it. I mean, a lot of places, like I know at Davis Block in Shirley, they have a Sam Luster factory.
Sam Luster?
And they've got building, they've got a lot of stuff up and they can do it. And they, people know that they don't write questions, that they don't degrade the structure.
Right.
It's just a surface stuff up and things up there.
If you have any names you could throw at me, send it my way. I'll look into it.
I'm not going to.
Yeah.
Okay.
Joyce, set up. So on the various sidewalk things, and of course, we know how those deteriorate. Shriver Center has a whole, one of their things is concrete sidewalk and stuff. Have we contacted them to see if they would like to do those as a project?
Who was that again?
The Shriver Center over there in Debenhams. The federal, you know, the training center.
Yeah.
Right, because I visited over there when they actually did some steps or something at the school. And then we went over and took them pizza to say thank you. About six or seven years ago, some ancient time. Because that's what those kids do.
Yeah.
And they need the experience.
Oh, Shriver.
Yeah, Shriver.
I have had them come here for smaller projects.
Yeah, yeah, but they have a, they did like steps and stuff for us.
His name is escaping me right now, Bill Vine or something like.
Bill Shine.
Bill Shine.
Kind of, it's a win-win thing because they need the experience.
Yeah, they do.
Secondhand satisfaction.
And they did very, very nice work.
Yeah.
They did the Page Hilltop, the front stairs. First year we came, they were broken. They were like a light bill for sure.
I don't know if they'll save us any money, but, you know, still...
They do sidewalk work.
It's kind of a win-win thing because they need the experience and we have the work, so.
Yeah, it's basically, you just have to bring in pizza.
That was just a fun thing. We didn't even have to do that, but it was fun to go over there. And then, do we have the prisoners' painting for us, I hope?
Not this year.
We didn't get them to summer, no.
We didn't?
No.
Any reason? Because it looks like we could do maybe more painting because we do have hands.
No, we just really didn't get set up this year. Just too many wheels turning and the materialize. Yeah.
Maybe there's a need for them in other communities.
But I think it's such a win-win situation to get them because every time I...
We have them all through the vacations.
Every time I visited, people were like, "Oh, yeah, we love doing this for the kids." So it's another thing that helps us, helps them.
So you bring on, like, student workers or...
Yeah, we are, yeah. I will be interviewing with some of them or a few of them. There's two that are returning from last year. And then there's been some interest, too. So we'll be bringing on probably a half a dozen or so.
Might be able to send those some your way.
There's an opening at Pedo Town.
It's nice to be on the project in Laura White, but over the last like two or three years with the blazing at the gym and repainting and the air conditioning for all the room to get this stuff onto the windows and getting some decent blinds and crap onto the windows, it is, looks like a totally different approach than it was just three or four years ago. Really colossal changes, absolutely.
Yeah, you know what, we can't, I mentioned to the school committee, they have the school committee meeting over there so you can see the library, but they can't set up for a blazing, so we can go in there anytime you want and question the principal, and I'll take some pictures and...
Yeah, they could just roll with the tape.
Excuse me?
I mean, I know we have a big cable audience, but I think, I think if they just go to the tape, it'll probably be okay.
Yeah, I know.
We could have somebody like send out tweets about what happened.
For all the people clamoring to know.
I think they just put it on a desk and they'll just throw it and it'll be fine.
Yeah, I'll go back and revisit because it is really nice. This morning, I went over early. They had a surprise practice. The Laura White retirees there in the library were commenting on it. And I always say, when I first came and visited all the schools, the Laura White teachers, I don't know for how many years they sat in the little kindergarten chairs reflecting me in the library. And I said, "Oh, my God, so we've got new tables and chairs." So, I mean, adults and the kids can sit in, you know, regular chairs, so. But it came out nice. We're going to do some painting the other summer, too, and just...
Yeah, they're going to finish it up.
Yeah, we're going to start some painting. And then Jermaine here needs a quick call, so we'll try to tackle that over there.
And the front parking lot expansion, I'm, that's this front parking lot, is that?
Yeah.
That's over there. Yeah, because that would have to go to maybe hearings and to approval by school committee to change the, to change the property.
I'm working with Mark Russell, the DPW superintendent in here. He's working on, looking at the storm, the storm water. And so we're waiting for them to get back to us because that's the first few things that we have to have.
Yeah, so that's...
Different engineers involved.
So that's a way out. That's not a summer project.
A lot of the work.
I mean, we haven't seen plans or anything yet. It hasn't been approved by the school committee.
We're trying to get the information. I just spoke on, sent him an email today. He's a great guy, Mark Russell. He's very supportive, but I didn't say, "Hey, remember me." But they've been working on here. They've had some, you know, issues with the water and such and such. And we all know how things happen to get, we get bought up, so. Get tidied better.
Tidied. Definitely.
Thank you very much. While I'm away, I just have one thing to do for Laura White. What's possible is a few over the summer, but to do some sort of sign that's perpendicular to the road, just because that is sort of a gateway road to Shirley, that has, you know, doesn't have to be obviously as fancy as the high school sign. Something that's a little bit, I think there is a sign out there that maybe isn't used anymore. Be located or just have something that's, or perpendicular to the road so that people do see that this is our...
Or the middle school?
Laura White.
Oh, Laura White.
And maybe at the middle school, too, if, you know, you're going to two-for-one, yeah.
No, you know what, Jonathan, we have to look into that and get that done. That's been on the list because the signs that are at the middle school, Laura White and Page Hilltop, were temporary signs that were erected when regionalized with the intent that they would be replaced with something more permanent and something improved. And the Page Hilltop sign over here, last year, the wind blew the glass off. So that's the image you can't even use. It needs to be taken down. And then I said, "Well, it should be moved up to the top of the hill, too, because that's what Page Hilltop is and we really need to put a sign that says, 'Page Hilltop Main Office, directing people to the main office.'" And then the Laura White, that little calendar sign, that's a piece of, they're not even putting it anymore. It's broken, so thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
All right. Also under new businesses, ratify the ASRA agreement. Do we have representatives here for them?
Yes, so we have Mr. Tully who came. Mr. Tully, they held their ratification meeting yesterday. And Mr. Tully texted me that the ASRA voted to ratify the contract. They're voting 95 to 6. Steve, I want to thank Steve and the ASRA team. Shal was on it and Mr. Plunkett and Mrs. Simmons and myself, Mrs. Larry and Joyce. And so we all worked well together. The school committee is very familiar with the memorandum agreement. I brought the information to it at executive sessions along the way. We have the memorandum of agreement that we're passing. And I think we have a fair and equitable contract for our teachers who have all been aware and supported the fact that our teachers really have foregone a poll raise in six years and that there was some concessions made by the ASRA unit to make regionalizing happen and to create equity between here and Shirley. And so I certainly have recognized that along the way. And we also have recognized that our salaries don't have been significantly lowered because of that gap in not getting those polls. So this contract was made in good faith and certainly in effort to pay our teachers' salaries that are competitive with surrounding towns and districts. And we have some other language in there as well, and so I think we have good agreement. Want to say something, Steve?
Yeah, that's from 945.
Oh. Recheck your texts.
Sorry, sorry, ninety-four to five.
Let's see. Anyway, ninety-four to five, okay.
She just added the puzzle, she added one on each end.
Ninety-four to five.
Just in case.
Yeah, yeah, right, it's good, it's ninety-four to five, I don't know.
I just wanted to.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, so.
That was pretty good, both bargaining process overall, I think we're very happy with the contract, and that was pretty happy.
At least except for five.
Smiles tomorrow.
So, this summertime, Dr. Wong and I will work together to put the new language into the existing contract, and ensure we have a bound contract to give hard copies out to people when they come back in, in August, again, in August. And I want to thank Linda, too, for the work, too, through the year here, going to all the school committee meetings.
Thank you.
The vice president of the union, so.
It takes a lot of patience, Linda, to come to all these meetings, like, five or many hours. I'm sure you're doing your bros, you listen, huh?
No.
So, thank you, Dr. Wong, thank you, school committee.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, make the motion that we, I forgot, ratify, thank you, ratify the Air Shirley Regional Educational Association agreement between the Air Shirley Regional School Committee.
Moved and seconded, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Linda, thank you, Steve.
Anyone opposed? It's ratified, thank you, Steve.
Thank you all.
All righty. All right, moving on to our superintendent's report.
May I ask the committee to suspend rubber tools and move up the policy and therapy dogs, I have this vote up here.
Oh, sure.
And I can share my potential for later tomorrow.
Yeah.
I'm having a turn in my office, I'll give her a quiz or something like that.
You can read it on the right.
So, so the, so Mr. Trudy Breslinian worked with me on this policy. Now, it's really different than the last policy, because as we looked at the last policy, we really said, it's really not for an employee, it's for somebody that would come in and contract with the district with a therapy dog. So, this policy is actually for an employee that would have a therapy dog, and so this will be a first read, and, you know, we'll bring it back to the agenda at the next meeting. But it's just one thing, you know, the, you know, some of the things are the same, the industry just requires the training certification, the health and vaccination control, but one of the things, when Trudy Breslinian finalized this with me, he said that we really would need to insure, our insurance company insure, because at the end of the day, the employee is still working for us, and we would still be liable if something was shot, so Bill had looked into it, and then I said, well, let me call myself, because Bill had attended a conference this morning to verify if it seemed that they were covered, and the manager, she said that they don't have that right now, and the owner of the dog should provide the school with proof of insurance and name the school as additional insured. So that is one piece we need to work through, which, because this is a policy in first read, I'm hoping that by June, I'm checking, by June, we can get this worked out, okay? Because we do have to protect the district, the school district, so.
So this is going to replace this, the one that was in the packet?
Yeah, yeah, that was an old one, sorry, yeah.
Okay.
This one, you should say, uh, something different.
I know, but I didn't know if it was additional.
Yeah, no, sorry about that.
I'm sorry.
Michelle wants to get the packets, too.
Yes, I appreciate it.
So, no, we, she didn't realize that we were gonna get the policy. Yes.
We're taking, sorry, I marked up for changes.
The policy, okay.
I said, the first sentence, therapy dogs, I changed family to privately, they may not, might be owned by a single person, so therapy dogs aren't privately owned pets. I changed that, and then on the second paragraph?
Yeah, where are you reading from?
I'm sorry.
You're looking at the old book?
Right, so, yes, because we got that one, Jim, there's a new one.
What was it?
Sorry, I was proud of you when I delivered the packets to you, I did not realize we were gonna have a new policy for use tonight. And that's a first read. Do you have a copy of it? Yes. The emerald holder. Yes. So this policy is written for an employee in the district specifically, so certainly it's a first read. Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
So this is gonna be an addendum to IMG, but I guess we're gonna take a look, they marked up policy IMG to make it compatible with what we had before. We should add a review for IMG for the next meeting.
So this is...
Not, this is the addendum to it, but IMG is policy for animals and stuff.
But I think...
Which is a different thing.
Well, it says therapy dogs, it's subtitled, therapy dogs, but this is actually, so there's another thing with IMG, so this is like the second paragraph that says therapy dogs, because this one, this one is gone, right?
Right, yeah, that one, well, that one never existed.
Exactly.
Right, we never had it, but the only decision is whether we want to have therapy dogs as an addendum to IMG or just give it its own.
Its own thing.
Right, I would just assume.
I would give it its own thing.
I would, I would, I would.
Yeah, the other policy is quite extensive.
Right, we just make, we just give it another designation.
IMG.
And we'll just move on.
Yeah. And then, the question was that, so if we have a therapy dog that is by only employees of the district, if you brought in consultants for certain kids who had a therapy dog, this policy would not cover them, right? And they could not do that, the way it's written.
Well, the old policy, the policy we had last time made a provision for that, I don't know whether the new one does. I've read it first.
But I, I guess when I, when I was looking at the training, I was thinking, I'll have to find that question out, would this policy cover somebody that was on contract? But, but you have the, so, I guess my answer to that would be, I don't think we would bring in, I know, I'm gonna, sorry, that podium is not placed right. I don't think we'd bring in, you might bring in a cert, a dog, but I don't think we could bring in a dog that, a therapy dog for one day.
No, but you could have a therapist, and you could have, and keeping, keeping a special in-house.
Yeah.
You could have a situation where there would be a therapist who would come, who would work the best with that child, because they had a therapy animal, I'll say, still a dog, but say dog, okay? And so, should we, shouldn't we have, because this is being expanded and expanded, shouldn't we have some kind of provision for that? Like, otherwise, we have to hire you in the district, and this is gonna cost a lot more money. I could see situations where...
I think what I hear you say, say like community link, you have therapists that come in to the schools from community link, providing school therapy, so if they were to bring a dog in, now, so they would own the dog, I have to look into that, look into that, Joyce, see if that's an addendum or something.
I mean, that would certainly be, maybe a very good financial thing to do, and the best thing for the kid, and the best thing for the situation, Cheryl knows more than I do.
Yeah, you make a good point, because it could be as simple as like a field day, and you're bringing in, you know, therapy animals to supplement that, you know, who knows, but it might make sense.
And this is an expanding area, and to limit it to just someone who works for our district, there has to be some way to do it.
Well, it says that, that school districts support the use of therapy dogs, they teach them, that other dog is a personnel form of the benefit, so you set it to be a position that is policy.
I wonder if you just added, or consultants?
Yeah.
Or consultants brought in by the district.
Are consultants insured by us, are consultants insured by whoever we're consulting from?
But, did I miss it, or do we not have in this document the, the situations where a therapy dog would be, be used? And wouldn't that be important to have in the document, where, what situations, therapy dogs, you know, would be of any kind of use, and where, where we would put them, you know, like, for emotional support of kids who have definite issues, kids who have reading issues that read to the dog in classrooms, or in whatever the situation, should that be documented, what situations that it would be used in?
I'm not sure, you know, if a person, if this is a situation of a psychologist going to work for us, who provides counseling, whether it be one-on-one or small groups, if that's where she would use, the therapy dog would be used. I don't know, I can ask, we need to be very specific as to what situations, I don't think this just covers it.
Yeah, I don't think you need to say specifically, because then you limit yourself, so the dog's walking down the hall, oh my God, the dog's walking down the hall.
I think it would just be difficult to anticipate, which is all the comprehensive systems, things that you could run up against, and at some point, you have to just say, hey, you know, the counselors and the psychologists think this would be helpful in this situation, and you sort of let them roll with whatever that situation is, but you have to control, you know, how the animal is introduced to the school or rest of that, but how it initially makes the, its entrance is really up to the psychologist.
Yeah, and I, I mean, the therapy dog is being used in therapy in the counseling situation, counseling department.
As a psychologist?
Yeah.
In this case.
But I can inquire, that should be...
Hey, something, if, if, there's a different situation, so you, you have a, a spec meeting for a particular kid, and it is decided by the team that a therapy dog would be beneficial to this, to this kid, do you now, are you now required, or whatever you want, find one that you can bring in with the trainer and assign him as like a, like a, an aide to, to an individual, because, oh, your school's going to have a therapy dog there, you're gonna, you've got one counselor, right, that, that has a therapy dog, you're not gonna have a therapy dog with access to every, every kid. So, so a kid, kid at middle school has an opportunity, because there's one there, but what if, what if a kid at Laura White really would benefit from the use of a therapy dog? Do we call one in, do we have access to that? I mean, that's, that's, I guess that's where I'm, I'm going with this. Equal access kind of thing for, for kids to, oh, the kids at middle school get access to a therapy dog, but I've got a kid right here, Laura White could use one, how do we get access there?
Well, I think that, it's policy broad enough that certainly if we, so, our school psychologists will be assigned to the school, because that's how you have to structure it, you know, in the district, they have to have an assignment, but certainly, if that situation arose where we identified that, maybe let's try using the therapy dog and counseling centers with the school psychologists, we would definitely say to the school psychologists, we should all work with this child with a dog. Yeah, sure. I mean, so, it's not like we would never say that the Page Hilltop of Laura White would have access, so we're replacing the psychologist into the schools, depending on their toolbox and their skill set and what grade level they'd be most appropriate with, for their counseling, but certainly it's not limited to any kind of, what's called cross-training, where people would be able to go over to the school and service kids that would benefit from, from this model.
My hope would be if there was a trauma for, like, either of the elementary school students from either building, if there was a trauma, I would hope that the school psychologist would go over, with permission, to go over and counsel the student and bring a therapy dog with her.
So she's basically assigned to the high school and middle school at this point, but that doesn't mean she can't.
Yeah, I mean, that's what's, that's what we're thinking, we're working on assignments and transfers and stuff this week, so that's what we're, we're making, yeah.
Yeah, so on this procedure, there's the bolded standards and procedures, it says the following requirements must be satisfied before a therapy dog would be allowed in, that those, the following things that are bolded are those, all of the requirements before it's allowed in? And the reason I ask is because I think it would be helpful if they, if a subset of those is the requirements, if they can be like indented or something to that effect, just a little policy reads a little bit, like, almost like a checklist, like, that would be good to do that.
Maybe like subsection A, B, C.
Yeah, something to that effect, just so that, I mean, I get that, like, the requests need filled out before that, that happens, but, you know, authorized areas, is that a requirement beforehand, like, that is just sort of...
So the formatting is like the formatting changes?
Yeah, so that whatever's, whatever's required beforehand is sort of grouped together and somehow segregated out of effect. And then, what was the name? I didn't remember the name, the woman who we're planning on hiring, she couldn't go in the cafeterias with, because...
Correct.
With the, with the board of, the board of health, I don't know if it's worth throwing any mention of the board of health requirements in there or not, it doesn't matter to me, but that's something I thought.
And some of those things are not requirements before.
Before.
Certainly.
Right.
You don't allow, you know, disruption until after it's in.
Yeah, exactly. So that's my idea.
And like anything, this is something new, it's going to be available for our district, and as we move along, if we find that we need to amend this policy, we bring things back to the research.
We'll do it again.
And I think what, what her feedback said, that, you know, all the concerns that we're probably going through are the same thing that they, with Pittsburgh, I may also have worked themselves out, so I'm confident that we'll do that, I mean, someone who works in, now works in the documentary office, it is very cool, and things just sort of work themselves out.
So. So, actually, there's no vote, I'm sorry, because this is your first read of a new policy, so you wouldn't vote tonight.
Does it have to be read?
Theoretically, yes. But I think Jonathan's changes there would be almost critical for a first read, because it reads then, you know, because it doesn't, he's quite right with indenting those various paragraphs to make it a flowing document. Other people are gonna read this. But we would accept it for first, I mean, we could pass it back for another first read, if you want those changes included, or we could take this as the first read.
Do you think they're critical enough, Jonathan, that we, so you can do a first read tonight, bring it back with the changes as a second read?
I doubt that there's gonna be, you know, pulling ten sections out, I think in putting four more, we want them, I think it's just gonna be a reordering.
Yeah, I agree.
Or a style or a format, so I'm not worried, and this is fine for me to do.
Then why don't you make that motion?
Do you want me to read it?
I can't believe you read that small part.
Sure, don't read it, okay?
You can read it.
All right? All right. So, I will qualify this with the policy...
Retitling?
Policy IMG addendum may not be a policy IMG addendum. Policy titled Therapy Dogs. The school district supports the use of therapy dogs by teachers or other qualified school personnel, in parentheses and quotes, owner, for the benefit of its students, subject to the conditions of this policy. Therapy dog. A therapy dog is a dog that has been individually trained and certified to work with its owner to provide emotional support, wellbeing, comfort, or companionship to school district students. Therapy dogs are non-service animals, as that term is used with Americans with, in the Americans with Disabilities Act. The dog must be well behaved and have a temperament that is suitable for interaction with students and others in a local school. Therapy dogs are personal property of the owner and not owned by the school district. Although therapy animals are not legally defined or protected, Air Shirley Regional School District, Air Shirley, recognizes the many benefits of animal assisted therapy in helping children with stu, with, I'm sorry, children with, with disabilities build self-esteem, reduce anxiety, and develop self-regulation. Standards and procedures, the following requirements must be satisfied before a copy of the therapy dog will be allowed in the school buildings or on school grounds. Request, an owner who wants to bring a therapy dog to school must submit a written request form to the superintendent. The request must be renewed each school year or whenever a different therapy dog will be used. Before the owner will be allowed to bring a therapy dog to Air Shirley, the owner must be given a copy of this policy, which they must agree, read, and agree to and sign before their request can be approved. Training and certification, the animal must be certified by a recognized organization, organization such as Therapy Dog International. The owner must submit appropriate certification as determined by the superintendent. The certification must be current at all times. Health and vaccination, the therapy dog must be clean, well groomed, in good health, housebroken, and immunized against... The therapy dog must be clean, well-groomed, good housebroken, and immunized against diseases common to dogs. Therapy dogs must be treated for and kept free of fleas and ticks. Owner must have approved of current licensure from the local licensing authority, approved of the therapy dog's current vaccinations and immunizations from a licensed veterinarian. Control. A therapy dog must be under control of the owner through the use of a leash or other tether unless the use of a leash or other tether would interfere with the therapy dog's safe, effective performance in its work or tasks. However, the therapy dog must be under the owner's control at all times. Identification. The therapy dog must have appropriate identification identifying it as a therapy dog. No disruption. The therapy dog must not disrupt the identification process by barking, seeking attention, or any other behavior. Health and safety. The therapy dog must not pose a health and safety risk to any student, employee, or other person at the school. Supervision and care of therapy dogs. The owner is solely responsible for supervision and care of a therapy dog, including any feeding, exercising, and cleanup of the animals in the school building or on school property. Air Shirley is not responsible for providing any care, supervision, or maintenance for a therapy dog. Authorized areas. The owner shall allow, only allow, a therapy dog to be in areas in school buildings or on school property that are authorized by school district administrators. Insurance. The owner must submit a copy of an insurance policy that provides liability coverage for the therapy dogs while on school property, including proof that Air Shirley is liable to an additional insured on the policy. Exclusion or removal from school. A therapy dog may be excluded from school property and buildings if a school administrator determines that, one, the owner does not have control of the therapy dog, two, that therapy dog is not housebroken, three, the therapy dog presents a direct or immediate health or safety threat to others in the school, four, the therapy dog's presence otherwise interferes with the educational process, or five, for any other discretionary reason consistent with this policy, and Air Shirley's responsibility is to provide for the safety, education, students, employees, and visitors. This includes the discomfort of students and employees from whom Air Shirley is responsible. The owner shall be required to remove the therapy dog from school premises immediately upon such a determination. Any allergies. If any student or school employee assigned to a classroom in which the therapy dog is permitted suffers an injury or reaction to the therapy dog, the owner of the animal will be required to remove the animal to a different location designated by an administrator. Damages to school property and injuries. The owner of a therapy dog is solely responsible and liable for any damage to school property or injuring personnel, students, or others caused by the therapy dog. Therapy dog and training. This policy shall also be applicable to therapy dogs and training that are accompanied by a bona fide trainer. And then page three is the acknowledgement by this employee, by signing below, I acknowledge that I have read and understand and agreed to the both policies regarding bringing back therapy dogs to Air Shirley Regional School District. My signature, I did notice something as I was reading there, superintendent isn't consistently capitalized or not. So, I think your title does get capitalized and you can do that.
One other small inconsistencies is where talking about Air Shirley, there's spots the hyphen and not hyphen. Okay, right. But it's inconsistent, so we could just fix that. All right.
I just, two minor things that I noticed on the third paragraph down, I'd like to strike with disabilities. So we, the district recognize many benefits of animal-assisted therapy, couple of children, build esteem. I don't think we have to add disabilities because they're helpful to all kinds of disability or not. I think we can just strike that.
I would strike that.
On the second, on the second beat, the authorized areas, the loading, the school administrators and people, I wondered how you guys feel about just banning over cafeteria areas.
And restricting to cafeterias.
Right. And all of the areas is subject to principle. I think cafeteria is not really.
And who's being served.
Well, outside of that, I think it's very well.
So we'll make those changes and then change the fact that it's second.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't see you behind.
So we'll move to both.
You, Tara, I didn't see you behind the podium before, I didn't realize we were there to move you up, I'm sorry. You were like not in my line of sight at all.
She was not moving. She was.
So that's why, I'm sorry that I didn't think to move it up earlier in the agenda until you said that.
She was very interesting. Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Tara.
All right. So do you want to go back to the superintendent's floor?
Sure. So these are submitted as very summer professional development. So as you know, we are being dismissed, and as something else I referenced, June 14 is the last day of school and is a half-day for students. So that leaves two full weeks in June, which I don't remember ever in all these years we had two full weeks. And do you remember, Sherry? No? No. So what's nice about it is that teachers tend to engage in professional development right after school gets out. You know, I would say that July is usually a dead month, people, I don't know. So anyhow, so as with every year, we have our summer professional development, workshop proposals from our educators, including containing areas that are very well aligned to some of our district objectives, such as student engagement, literacy, social-emotional learning, and inclusive practices. Some of the topics of the workshops that educators will participate in include the MFI in the classroom, two different book studies, one of universal design for learning and the other from a fall keynote speaker, Jessica Minihan, entitled Behavior Code. I brought Jessica Minihan, you won't want to miss her when we open today. Anyway, social cognition and zones of regulation, Google Classroom, mindfulness, behavioral assessments, and a focus on literacy with word study and poetry. And we're pleased to have so many different traces authorized for our educators. And we have some of our own educators offering workshops every year. We put out proposals and first solicit to our educators if they're interested in the workshop. Title, Title One Power Extended School Year, I think this will be our third year, the invitations have been sent out. Students, grades one through eight, and as the parent registrations come in, we will be finalizing the schedules, classes, and coordinating our invitation arrangements. We encourage our PRs to reach as soon as possible to facilitate the scheduling process. If we included our students who have extended school year services, articulating on their individualized education plans, we've provided over 230 students to participate in summer programming in the district. We are also in the midst of putting the final touches on a summer credit recovery program being offered at the high school through a blended learning approach with continuity. We offered that last year as well. And I would say that the Title One Power, I quote that our families that have received an invitation will take advantage of this, we do provide transportation. And the other piece is, this is run in coordination with special education, summer programming for students that have summer program in their IEPs. So we work cooperatively with Mrs. Bosack and her department, providing transportation and all of that. And remember a few years ago, I think the first year, so this, I think, will be our third summer, I had that traveling art program, and they created that big abstract piece of art.
That was so fantastic.
Fredo Pageill talked about, we blended the kids together, it was such a wonderful project, I don't know if you saw the show, it was a recycling project, and so we just found all of this stuff that was in the throwdown, the kids just prayed.
You pulled it out from the school and you went, I haven't said, look at this for about a year.
So, yeah. Summer meeting lists, Mr. Cleary approached, this is a little bit different theme this year, which is great. Summer also means it's time for summer meeting lists. So this year, we have collaborated with a core team in the district, a couple of librarians from both towns to develop lists that provide more choices for students. So as I talked to you a few years ago about universal design for learning, that includes voice and choice for kids, because we all know that not every student can do the same assignment at the same time in the same way. So these will be updated on our website, surely on our summer meeting page. Our goal this summer is to get students just to read books of interest and try and celebrate the love and joys that reading brings over the summer. So I guess he wants to know what books he's gonna read. But I would say too that, you know, a lot of time, and you may have heard it from your own children, when we've had a signed reading and kids come back to school and teachers get right into busy, to be able to do their work, they don't ask kids about their summer reading, kids will say, well, why don't you have, you know, they don't ask about it, and because we just get right into the curriculum. So I think this might be a better model, we'll see how it turns out. The goal is to get kids to read, not hold them accountable for.
We had, I don't know if you guys remember, I mean, Paula Sullivan, do you remember, we had a district book?
Oh, yeah, it was The Hunger Games.
Was it?
The Hunger Games, that's a great idea.
Wasn't it the kids, I mean, it was all the kids and all faculty and administrators and janitors and everybody, it's like you all have to read this book.
And they went to see the movie.
That's a great idea.
It worked out great because you immediately had something in common with everybody.
Do you remember that?
I think that was probably not the animated version. Well, you know, part of the challenge, so part of the challenge for a team-based classroom is that you have every student reading a different book, how do you address that as an assignment except to just engage? But if everybody reads the same book, that's really great, that's like a really great unifying and.
There was a discussion with everybody, that's it.
Yeah, we all would be talking about opening day, we'll just talk about the book we read.
Well, and I want to say they showed the movie. Didn't they either go to the movie or they showed the movie?
That's a great idea.
After.
Yeah, when they came back in the fall, I thought there was some component, maybe it was just the high school kids that did it.
We'll have to look at that. Some district updates, we're managing a Shirley Regional School District, we held workshops with all faculty last week and we received excellent feedback. And so we will now begin to draft a three-year strategic plan, which, as you know, will be brought back to at the June 19 meeting. The middle school parent presentation in Tor, for the first time, incoming parents, guidance of the fifth graders and soon be sixth graders are invited to attend this information event at the middle school on Monday, June 10, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. Parents have expressed their desire to have this event and we have listened. The middle school will still host their annual ice cream social in August. So a lot of parents, they just have that anxiety, they want to get to the middle school and see it, take a tour, so we're really happy. The parent satisfaction survey, the survey's been sent out to all families and we encourage everyone to participate. We have included a question or a management in the district and we want to give all stakeholders as we profess in our vision statement, what matters.
When do you gather all the data on that?
When we close it and then I'll give the school committee back a report.
Like over the summer?
Yeah, so I extended to June 14. So then over the summer, then I'll give a report probably in August or something. Okay. Graduation, the eighth commencement of Air Shirley Regional High School will be held this Friday evening at the Harold G. Norton Field. And to the school committee members, please be at this high school by 5:30 in the school council hallway, we will begin to line up at 5:45 before professing to the field, assessing, excuse me, you all have your capes on. And so we'll line up and we'll move forward. The Upway 20 Center budget, just wanted to give everyone an update of where we stand. Bill, do you want to agree with that?
Well, the last phase of the budget is, this month is the conference committee, and that's made up of members of the Senate and the House, and their job is to basically iron out any differences between the two proposals. There's not pretty much to iron out because there's only a $245 difference between the House proposal and the Senate proposal. So it should be pretty close to the Senate proposal of $8,044,854 to Air Shirley. And our budget is about $242,000 less than that. We stick with, we stay with the governor's budget for a lot of our revenue targets, so you can see that regional transportation is up a little bit, Chapter 7 is up $10 per student, and we also had choice sending is a little bit lower than the target is up. So that's where we are with budget process.
Can we send a thank you note to the people who finally did something for regional transportation? Because that's the highest we've ever had.
That's the highest anybody's ever had, right?
Yeah, the last couple of years, we've had a lot of attention, all the representatives were.
Well, even before that, it dribbled along, even before we were region, and people complained literally, but it got cut to only 30% one year or something, before our time. So who do we, who do we boost up on this?
The legislators, you know, the legislators and, you know, there was a group two that formed and matched the sort of view of transportation.
But that number's only gonna go.
There's also, there's also, I think I told you that too, there's also a group about the whole monopoly if you want, transportation, and it's so expensive. I received a call today from Peter Holden in Starbase, which we love, the kids love going here for a week, it's free, but the transportation costs have become exorbitant, I mean, it just.
What is the transportation cost for them?
Right, to go for a week, so he, well, he came, he gave me a name of a company that we're gonna look into, going to look into, and then he also requested that we write a letter, he's trying to get some funding from someone else, but, you know, all districts are failing it because there's so many great places to go for kids on field trips and nothing's going away because of the cost of the busing. It's ridiculous. So anyhow, there's another group out working for that. And I know there's a big push to fully plan Circuit Breaker, and of course, you know that there's all the, you know, the recommendations for the students, particularly low-income students, that they need to have a higher per pupil. So there's a lot of advocacy out there for that too, I don't know where it's all going. That's a separate vote from the budget that the Senate and the House are doing to do those PRC recommendations, the separate, last year it almost passed, but at the end they didn't.
I don't know if any of you guys know whether this ever happened, I mean, given our proximity, I don't know what you're, have any school groups ever just taken the train into the city and back? I mean, we say group two, a bunch of places, but you sit there and you go, those rails are running all the time, you know, and I bet you could get like, especially a little way, worrying about the commute, there's tons of empty stuff. You could probably get a gray.
Gray day.
To do, and you live all the way back, you could just have a bus pick up or whatever at the train station, which is so lucky to have it right where we have it.
Well, that's another great experience for the kids.
Yeah. Going on the train. The only problem is they'd most likely be coming back after school hours, just because of the way the trains run and having enough time in the city, so you'd have to give that some consideration.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, take advantage, right? Although the train is going so expensive too.
Well, they've done a lot of stuff, I mean, I've got a couple passes, a weekend is 10 bucks. Going where you want, a weekend, 10 bucks for that one, 10 bucks, one time, 10 bucks for what you want, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
On the commuter route?
Yeah, just go in, back forth, wherever you want, 10 bucks.
It was mentioned last meeting, is there, is there a group, a committee, a subcommittee looking into purchasing our buses?
I think I kind of made an introduction of it with Dr. Clunchy over in Littleton, you know, to car-share a bus, and I just haven't followed up with you, we both got busy, you know, it's something to look into. But the other thing, and I know, you know, in other districts, typically the children are charged something to go on a field trip because of the cost of the bus, and, you know, most parents, and those students that can't afford it, then the school picks up, we pick it up. So I really want to emphasize that with the principals because it's experiential learning, it's project-based learning, it connects to the classroom, it's real-life application, so many great things, really, you know, so.
For free.
And we live in an area where we're history-rich, so there's so much they're learning in the classroom that they could take a car ride, or a bus ride, 15 miles, and they're right where it happened, so.
Well, more and more of our parents are tech-oriented too, so something like Starbase is becomes critical.
I already talked to you about the AP, the CMs, and the last day of school. Newsmakers, the Massachusetts Educational Theater Guild, congratulations to Chris O'Bain, he's been nominated best supporting actor in his performance in Seymour and the Little Shop of Horrors. Middle School Vienna Chorus, this year again, they both fought the Superior Award at the Trails in Thrills, so. Sports update by Mr. Kendall, Unified Track entered the gravy nominal season with a third-place finish at Central Mass and a ninth-place finish at the St. Louis. Three Lemister students on the court won individual state titles, while the four-by-100 team, which included the issue of David Argdet and Courtney Niedemeyer, finished third. In track, Jimmy Robinson was a central wet player at the 100, while the four-by-100 team of Lucas Sergeant, Leo Rosales, Fayev Bashir, and Jack Brewer also won a title. The four-by-100 team, which included Robinson, set a PR at the state, all-state meet last weekend. Six middle school athletes qualified for the state middle school meet. Jacob Calgrin placed second in Division Two 100, while Allison Gavell was second in the discuss. Seventh grader Ava Murphy qualified for nationals in three events and will compete next Thursday in Greensboro, North Carolina, with coach Mike Sewin. And we'll let you know who do fund for the coach and the student to go, the mother will go along and pay, so isn't that pretty good? that pretty good?
That's fantastic.
Yeah, we had somebody compete last year, a couple of students went to North Carolina.
Yeah, the senior relay team.
Yeah, yeah, senior, yeah.
Can I add one more to the newsmaker?
Yeah.
Olivia Ostrecker sang, made it into the States for chorus, which was in Boston. I don't remember the date, but she also auditioned for Nationals, which will be in Florida in October or November, and she should find out this month, so we're keeping up on this process, because that was quite a, quite a process to go through.
Yeah, she was describing, she's in my high school advisory too, yeah. Oh, the cross is the number seven C and hosts Luenenberg at Norton Field tonight at 7:00 p.m.
Can I give you a breaking news?
Yeah, go ahead.
It's not really breaking, because it was a few minutes ago, but it's seven to four at the half of Luenenberg ahead.
All right. Softball's awaiting a playoff opponent, we'll email you as soon as I have it, I guess that's me, and finished season at 11:09. Middle school softball had a solid season as well, sewing rope under coach Mike Wood Flair. And baseball suffered a number of mid-season injuries, but still had a 9-11 record. JV baseball had a outstanding season, as did middle school, which dropped up this afternoon to Hondo, coach Tim Trisha did a nice job.
The softball team is playing Leicester, I don't know the date.
Saturday, I saw.
Oh, yeah, Leicester, there you go. I think we said, well, 15 students were nominated and went down to Honor Band, the concert was last Sunday in Shrewsbury, between high school students and a group of middle school, they have two different bands, and the director of the, of the music program from Syracuse University runs that, and he's going from here over to France, Strasbourg, to conduct over there from there. It was an eye-opener for all the students as they read some of the people in Central Mass that are the best of their own students and kind of hang out a bit, but it's just a lot of virtual people to play.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we've done the 9A policy on therapy dogs, we'll move on to the high school field project update, so Dr. Malone and I met with Shirley Town Manager, our town administrator, Mike McGovern, and the chair of the Board of Selectmen, Deb Flag, on Wednesday, May 29th, to discuss the reduced scope fields project that the school committee had voted to move forward with at our last meeting. We will appear before the Board of Selectmen at their June 18th meeting to request that they schedule a debt exclusion vote, we're shooting for a date in September.
Is that Monday, is that Tuesday, June 18th?
The 18th, I don't know, it's probably Monday.
They meet on Monday?
They meet on Monday, 6:00 p.m.
I know they meet on Monday, but, never mind.
Yeah, it's 6:00 p.m. Tuesday.
Because the 16th is Father's Day, the 17th is Monday, and the 18th would be Tuesday.
Oh.
Yeah, it is Tuesday, but June 18th is Tuesday.
Didn't they say June 18th?
You know, I just wanted to tell everyone that my calendar, I was just sending it, and I went and put a media watch on the 17th, because they need on Monday.
Right.
So I just have the date off, so you can confirm it, but.
Okay, well, we'll be at that meeting.
Yeah, so I think it's June 17th, right.
My grandchildren are coming in from California, so I know the day, Mike, that's Monday.
Yeah, I will confirm with Mike, but please.
Okay, so I guess, really, just as far as an update, that's pretty much really what's going on there. The next item would be whether the school committee wants to entertain appropriating some capital stabilization funds for the fields project. So currently, what we voted on at our last meeting is a $6.5 million project, so, you know, what we were given was a $7 million project, but with the generous pledge of $500,000 from the Norton Family Foundation, we're down to 6.5. And also at our last meeting, we voted we were going to transfer 300,000 from E&amp;D to the capital stabilization fund, which currently is pending approval from both towns. The current balance in our capital stabilization fund is 349,914. Just wondering whether the committee wants to entertain contributing to the project by looking at taking some of the money from capitalization, capital stabilization, and perhaps putting it towards the contingency portion of the project, which is 298,172.
Can you tell us one minute?
298,172, that's Flansburg's organization of costs.
Those are contingency costs?
Yeah, so if they're, if they're expended, if they're not expended, so what we could potentially do is earmark those funds towards the contingency, if they're not spent, they wouldn't be used, they'd stay where they are, if they are spent, we would make a contribution towards the project in that amount, or whatever the amount is that is expended. So if you look, you guys don't have it, I don't think in front of you, but it's a 5% construction contingency, which is 298,172.
So the contingency is construction, but that's not, that's not soft costs, so beyond the building costs, don't we have soft costs that can be, that can come up?
We do have design and engineering fees, they're all accounted for, and what.
So that are all the legal costs accounted for, and which came out to this school at $650,000 approximately, that we had to cover later, am I right, Bill, that's why I'm looking at you?
They're all included in his.
So they're included in this?
That's separate from the contingency.
F, F, N, A, legal.
F, F, N, A and legal.
Remember on the, on the project, so the actual project is 6 million, and then on the, you have the project cost breakdown, which brought the project to the 7 million. So part of that, the breakdown was the cost of construction, the construction contingency, which Michelle was talking about, design, engineering fees, FF, technology and additional project costs.
I don't know why you would limit it to contingency costs, I'm just confused.
You could put it towards anything, I just, it's, it's a way of contributing towards the project in a way that brings down the cost of the overall project, because that money's earmarked towards the, towards the project.
Right, no, I understand, but, so instead of, so we're going to talk to Shirley about 6.5, which what percentage of that is theirs?
41.5%, so if I could give you guys just pass down, this would be a breakdown.
It's a, it's a.
Yeah. So if we were to keep it at a 6.5 amount, that Shirley would be looking at, 41.5% of that are 2.697,500,000. And then if we were to contribute or decide we want to use any sum of money, it doesn't have to be 300,000, but say it was, if it was 6.2, their portion goes down to 2.573 million, because their total contribution is 41.5%.
So that really takes nearly all of our capitals, capital fund, right? If we're only giving 43%, and do we have more from E&amp;D that we can move in there?
So really what it is, is there's 349,914 right now, we have another 300,000 that we voted to transfer.
Right.
That is going for the towns to have that.
So when Michelle and I met, I met with Robert and gave him the letter, E&amp;D letter and template to ask, as we did with the FY19 budget, that they would wait 45 days, and so he was going to meet with his board, and he asked me to pencil in June 18th, which is a Tuesday, in here, the bill begins to go before that board again, and then the, we gave the same information to Mike and Chair Flag, when we met with them last week, so I think it'll be a part of, we stuck to the page of both that and then we gave him that letter, just as we did last time. So as of right now, we don't have that, that money, but it's earmarked, approved by the towns to go in. So that leaves about, in the memo that was given to school committee, last time, that would leave, with all the transfers being approved, that the balance of E&amp;D would be And if the balance, whatever the school committee decided to put toward the project, if it was 300,000 based on these two numbers here, you would still have a balance of 349,914 capital stabilization. You are, are still proposing to pay off the BAN at 370,223, that would not be part of the town assessment, we will develop a 45-month budget, and, and then the special education fund is capped at a percentage which we've been made at 36,504.
So we, we talked tonight about something projects totaling approximately 250,000. Is there a point at the funding source to come out of the tax date, someone tells me I was, or do we have an idea yet to remove any of that money?
Well, yeah, he can, I'll have to defer to you, but, so in the budget, this current budget, we learned through the auditors, and Bill learned through the auditors, that the Circuit Breaker Fund exceeded the amount that we could have, so it's going back into our general fund.
So in the FY19 budget, we have some balances and out-of-district tuitions, because we're shifting some expenses through Circuit Breaker, because you can only maintain a balance of your prior year reimbursement, so we have to spend some of that down, and then we also have a balance in our health insurance line, because the headcount is mainly stable, but we have more retirees, we have 10 more retirees, so we are going to balance in our health insurance line, so we would propose some transfers to those facility lines, which were over for the year, and to help with funding for next year, because that health insurance line is going to remain the same for next year with no increase.
But we haven't made those transfers yet.
No, I would do them.
At the next meeting.
Before.
In the 19th. Right.
So, I mean, the money, the money is in the budget though, it's just a matter of charging the, so we have certain lines that go over, so when we, when we do the budget, we, you know, we try to, we try to budget the best we can in each line of what you're going to expend, but sometimes it comes in more, it comes in less, so even though the line, like say somebody from the school wanted to need some supplies and their supply line had already been expended, and we would say, yes, we approved that expense, but we still want to charge it to that line, because for me and Bill, is that you want to look and say, okay, which lines do we under-budget, and what lines do we over-budget, so you can have a more balanced budget, so.
So I think this, my question was that we're not planning on using the tax date.
No, no, given the.
To do that. I guess the biggest one there is the boiler at 150.
Which we planned on.
Yeah.
No, no, that's fine, if we can handle it in the budget, that's great, I have no issue.
Well, it's important though, if there was going to be other funds coming up, that's what we.
Does anyone think that doing that will make it more likely that Shirley will vote positively?
Well, certainly, any funds that reduce the contribution from Shirley, I think, would help, right? And it shows a commitment on the part of the district, and us recognizing how much of a need it is for our schools to have this, I don't know, if I can't speak to whether.
Sort of a statement on our part, saying, you know, we're willing to take some money and throw it towards, towards the fields.
Right, because ultimately, the fields need this work, it's going to come from our, you know, from our coffers at some point if we don't do a full-scale renovation.
I make a motion to take $300,000 in that part and.
Save for which?
Move it to the field market.
Okay, stable, capital stabilization.
My question's going to be, are we going to do this now, or are we just going to earmark? Because I think there's a difference there.
Yeah, I mean, I think if it's, I don't, you guys can probably help, but if it's earmarked for the project, we can reduce the overall.
Borrow.
Borrow, because we've got that money earmarked.
And we would keep it in capital stabilization.
It's just like the 500,000, it's a pledge, it's not a vote, just to expend it.
Right.
Right.
So we have to put that into the motion, that it's earmarked.
Yeah, from Cape Cap, 300,000 from the capital stabilization fund to earmark it for the fields project.
That's the motion.
All right, so that's a motion.
I'll second it.
Motion. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, so five to one, that was passed.
Go ahead, John. Chair. Bill, could we have, you know, I'm visual, could we have that laid out as to what those various funds are, and then we're going to do the transfers for various lines at the next meeting, right? So that could all be laid out neatly, that would be superior.
And when you say the funds.
Well, you know, like now, what's left, you know, like put this, what it is, where it went, what that becomes, you know, because, you know, you need to see that laid out in the document in your minutes anyway, that would be a good thing to do for appearances.
I think we should have, our next meeting's the, what, 22nd, right? So we should have.
19th.
So we should have indication, hopefully, from both towns, whether they're going to wait 45 days.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It has to be voted, surely, surely has to vote in override.
No, no, different, different thing.
No, we're talking, you know, talking about the.
45-day waiver.
45-day.
We were on amended budget, so last meeting we amended the budget.
Right. But then they also have to vote in override.
Yes, but again, separate things, you were asking about balances of funds.
Right.
And I said, we will have, by the next meeting, we will have indication from Aaron Shirley whether they're going to waive that 45 days and basically in our budget, so they will have the final fund balances to present to us, is what I was getting at.
When you say override, do you mean the debt exclusion vote?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
Debt exclusion vote, it's an override. It's an override. How many days do they have to call that?
35?
35 days.
They need 35 days.
To establish the voting, 45, I think it's 45.
Talking about the, oh, talking about the.
Yeah, it's not a town meeting.
It's 35 days, they have, they have to notify the town 35 days, because they have their balance and all these other things, but you can't hold it before them, but when we held it the last time, there were other considerations, they had other elections and other.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so moving on to item D, at our last school committee meeting, we took a vote with regard to the funding for the fields project, and we had mentioned the dollar amount at being, this shall not exceed 7.1. So it suggested that we amend that vote to reflect what we're actually looking for from the town of Shirley, which, given our last vote, will be 6.2 million, so I'm just going to pass out to you guys some language that Attorney Manley, in his letter, had suggested, we've just modified it with the new dollar amount, and I think that that vote should be amended so that it's accurate and it reflects what we're actually looking to borrow for the fields project.
Madam Chair, I just want to, on the, on the language that 6.2 with Shirley, it's not, we just want to be clear on that, because the total amount of the project, we know it's 6.2, but the Shirley portion would be what you just gave up.
Right, right, yeah.
I think we're, I think we're beginning to confuse that, that amount of money is going to Shirley, but it's a portion of the total.
Right, so to be clear, if, now with the 6.2 funding amount for a 15-year loan, with Shirley's portion of 41.5%, the principal would be 2.573. portion of 41.5%, the principal would be 2.573 million. And with a 4% interest rate, the interest would be 917,929,37. So it's important that we stress that, certainly the portion to Shirley is not 6.2 million, it's 41.5% of that.
But you don't have to have that in your motion, your motion is just to, yeah, put the top number.
Yeah, the 6.2.
Right.
I'm sorry.
Why would we put the number that would be Shirley's number in there?
That, you know, the board members denied.
That would be a separate.
I think it's the total amount of the project.
That would be a separate designation. The motion was to limit the top of the project at 6.2.
Right.
Not saying what the division was going to be.
Because it won't appear on the ballot, it won't appear on the ballot. This is not a legitimate city, enough portion.
Right. It just says, was the Town of Shirley has voted.
There's no dollar amount on the warrant.
Right.
Okay, it would be nice if there was, but yeah. Okay, so that would be, yeah. That would be the reason.
I have a motion to rescind our amount that we used on the, on the last meeting as to the cap on the project, to reduce it to 6.2 million. The total amount to be borrowed to pay the cost of the district's athletic field project is approved at a town election in Shirley on the date to be determined, shall not exceed 6.2, and further, no amounts shall be borrowed to pay the cost of the district's athletic facility project, unless the Town of Shirley shall have voted to exclude the amounts required to pay its allocated share of debt service on the amounts borrowed to pay costs of the athletic facility project from the property tax levy limitations of Proposition Two and a Half.
From the amendment, for a second. Can we specify out 6.2 to $6,200,000, please?
Okay, thank you, you're right. I misread it, it is $6,200,000. You're quite right.
Seconded.
Okay, moved and seconded, any other discussion?
Again, I would say, I would, since we have the approval from the end vote of 7-1, and given our recent track history on pricing, what happened the first time around, I would like to keep as much range as possible. So at this point, we always have the opportunity to, if this passes, to end up, once we get quotes in, to borrow the amount actually necessary for the project. But at this point, I would be averse to giving that money that we already have approval for.
And actually, it's still a $7.1 million project, it's not a 6.2.
Well, we've got.
Even though it's going to potentially be reduced to that, then we have just said, if we do this, that we're not going to, that the project is not going to exceed 6.2, and it's a 7.1. When you're taking the other monies out to tell Shirley, oh, that sounds better, but that's actually, you've limited yourself, your money. Then that money from, what's it, from Mr. Norton and the money from us has to go under the 6.2, not under the 7.1.
First words in the sentence are the amount to be borrowed to pay costs of the district's athletic, are, are meaning keyword.
Oh, borrowed, okay.
Okay, any other discussion?
Capital one.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, motion passes. All right, that's it for ongoing business now. Policy Subcommittee, there's nothing. No Chairman's Notes, any other topics for discussion? We've anticipated 48 hours in advance of this meeting. Anyone have anything? Okay. Communications, I just have one letter that was received and was asked to be read, so I'll just read it quickly.
I read the letter, I don't know, I don't know if it needs to be read in ten minutes.
Hmm? Okay, well, it was in everybody's pockets, I don't know, I don't know.
I read it.
I read it.
Everybody?
I don't know if it's germane, in fact, we've already made the motion, and I don't know the further explanation is germane to what we have done.
Okay, that's the bill of the committee, that we don't read the letter, we won't read the letter, we can go ahead with the announcements. Who's our secretary? I'm sorry.
So the senior cookout is this Wednesday, June, that's at 6:00, at the Air Shirley Regional High School Commons. Same day, we have the Air Shirley Regional Middle School 8th Grade Graduation Dance from 6 to 9 at the Holden Run in Shirley. June 6, Page Hilltop 5th Grade Tour, the middle school, at 9:30. And also on Thursday, June 6, the Middle School Spring Concert is at 7:00 at the, in the auditorium of the middle school. Friday, June 7, Laura A. White Barbecue in Hudson Beyond, that's from 11 to 1:30 during lunches in their cafeteria. And also on June 7, is the high school graduation here at the high school in the field, and it looks like the weather is going to be great. I can throw my fingers crossed, at 6:00 PM. Monday, June 10, is the AR Supertown Meeting at 7:00 here at the high school in the auditorium.
Isn't that also the Shirley Supertown Meeting at 7:15 in?
Oh, it's canceled.
There is no.
Are they canceled it?
I heard on Facebook.
I said, Mrs. Bailey, know that, you know, Shirley's not meeting, but she had scheduled her parent night, and she said, is Shirley's Supertown Meeting?
When they say Supertown, when they're saying Supertown Meeting, that indicates both towns, right?
Well, and Harvard.
Oh, Harvard.
With the Douglas.
Oh, Shirley's not going, okay.
So now that you all have one day, I don't think you'll be able to go to Wester to watch the middle school band, do the national anthem at the baseball game.
Oh, cool. Very Western?
I think.
Very Western? Very Western?
Uh, just like the Holy Cross.
The Holy Cross Field?
The name of the, you're a merit.
So fun.
So what night?
Go to the baseball game.
We also have on June 10, the middle school incoming 5th Grade Parent Presentation in Coors, from 6 to 7 at the middle school auditorium in the middle of the building. Tuesday, June 11, the middle school science fair, 6 to 7, at the middle school gymnasium, that's always so fun down in the city. Wednesday, June 12, the Air Shirley Regional High School Spring Sports Banquet at 6:00 PM here at the high school. Thursday, June 13, Page Hilltop 5th Grade Recognition Assembly at 9:30 AM here at the high school. June 13, Laura A. White Preschool Family Celebration, 10 to 11:30 AM, and 2 to 3:15 PM. Thursday, June, what's going on on the 13? 13, I feel bad for parents who have kids in all the buildings. Air Shirley Regional Middle School 8th Grade Graduation at 7:00 PM.
It looks like you haven't set up any home security.
Sorry. I touched on it.
My daughter Jean, I know, smartphones are too smart.
Why does it got me this thing? It's very. June 15, the middle school 8th grade graduation, 7:00 PM, middle school auditorium, I feel my face is going to break. Friday, June 14, the last day of school, it's a half a day, dismissal times for the high school, middle school are 11:20 AM, and Laura A. White and Page Hilltop at 12:15 PM. And then Sunday, looking ahead, September 29, the Holden Run Trail Run at 11:00 AM in Shirley.
Registration's now open.
Jonathan, who's mad doing that?
First 300 get hats, shirts by Labor Day, and first 300 also get a little tilt back this year, too, thanks to our friends at Phoenix Park slash Lexus.
Awesome, nice. Great fundraiser for Air Shirley Education Foundation.
How did the fundraiser go with the?
It went very well, it raised 29,000.
Wow.
But I think that might be before some expenses, so, but yeah, it pretty much funds our fall grant cycle, yeah.
Ma'am Chair, I made just a statement about ASAP, and I neglected to write in the Supertown's comments, so every year, you know that ASAP grants, an impact grant to the school department. So Mr. Clary and I met, and they asked, this year, they, they were doing a little specifically, and they asked for several suggestions. So we talked, we were to a meeting, and talked about them, and so I received notification that they are going to contribute $4,000 to the new early childhood playground at Page Hilltop, and then they're going to contribute 2,000 each in the sensitivity, sensory sets for kids in both elementary schools. So they're really nice, they're sensory sets, where we talked about, I think, in the last school committee, where kids that need to regulate, or become deregulated, can go and use these, they touch the walls, and it's a sensitivity component, and develop those coping skills. So I'm also looking into it at the middle school, because we have our AST program there, and some of those students could use that. So thank you ASAP, we appreciate your contributions, and.
Appreciate ASAP.
Yeah, yeah, those are some good choices, and it's kind of fun to do, to get, you know, pocket some money to each school.
Yeah, it felt like a nice contribution towards the new preschool program.
Yeah, really excited about that. Bob Briggs has really worked closely with us to a developing timeline, because we have a few teachers, and teachers wanting to get into their classrooms, so he's done a really good job in developing a timeline, so providing teachers boxes at Laura White, and hopefully, we, you know, it'll strengthen for our high school students, and they'll select, you know, the childhood pathway, speaking of pathways, and get dual enrollment credit. And that's another thing, I, you know, should be going to talk more about, but dual enrollment is available at the high school. Tara Bolte's daughter, Kelsey, graduated from Mount Montezet a couple Thursdays ago, even before she has her diploma, and she opted to attend, she's doing her own program that we have at the high school. And I think, I think, the council department said, yes, I'm the first student in many, many years, and so I think we need to really provide better information to parents than to understand what's available in the dual enrollment program for kids, because you can still attend the high school and get high school college credits, which is what the early childhood program will provide to students.
Can we have a kid, previously, who was to Polytech, and a dual enrollment thing, finished freshman year at Worcester Polytech, while he was a senior in high school?
I did it back when I was junior in high school, I did it, I didn't do it as a master full-time at Worcester State, at Worcester State, middle college program.
Yeah, I think what the council department's referring to is that somebody actually got an associate's degree.
Yeah, right.
While in high school, yeah.
That's awesome, that's awesome.
Yeah.
When I did it, it was fully state-funded, we should pick your books and transportation, which was great. I don't know if that's still the way now, but even still, it's great to.
Yeah, I think Kelsey has quite a few credits that are transferring.
Oh, yeah, to her bachelor.
For her bachelor's, yeah.
Good.
Yeah. All right, nothing else, there's no need for executive sessions.
I'll make a motion, they'll adjourn at 8:35. I can't see the whole clock.
Seconded.
Seconded, moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.